I'd like to call the July 14, 2025 Board of Commissioners meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by the chief.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Deanna, would you please do the roll call?
Catherine Carter, President.
Here.
Rebecca Moody, Vice President.
Here.
Denise Hall, Commissioner.
Here.
Liz McNaney, Commissioner.
Here.
Gregory Mull, Commissioner.
Here.
Sandra Zedell, Township Manager.
Here.
Megan Weaver, Assistant Township Manager. Lauren Gallagher, Township Solicitor.
Here.
Nicholas Cross, Township Engineer.
Here.
David Duffy, Chief of Police. Ryan Shapiro, Finance Director. And it is noted that David Conroy, zoning officer, is absent.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number four for the swearing-in ceremony. I believe Commissioner Hall will take it from here.
Thank you, Commissioner Moody. So we are so excited to swear in a new police officer today, Kyle D. Fazell. And before we do that, I just wanted to share a little bit of information about him. Kyle graduated from Council Rock High School South, and then he attended Bucks County Community College, where he studied criminal justice. Kyle then worked for several years in the transportation industry. In order to renew his pursuit of a career in law enforcement, Kyle stopped working and attended the Montgomery County Community College Police Academy, where he graduated just on June 11. Kyle will be assigned to the Patrol Division. So Kyle, if you and your family could join me.
I, Kyle D. Fazell. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United. Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And the ordinances of Upper Gwinnett Township. Against all enemies, board and domestic. I will bear true faith and allegiance. To the same. And enforce the law without consideration. To a person's race, color, or gender. Religion, sexual orientation, or age. Nationality, ancestry, handicap, or disability. I, Kyle D. Fazell. Do further solemnly swear or affirm. That I take this obligation freely. Without mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will faithfully discharge. The duties of probationary police officer.
Did you want to take some pictures? Did you guys want to take a couple of quick pictures?
Thank you so much for coming tonight, everybody. We appreciate it. Just the police officers. Everybody else has to stay. Congratulations. Congratulations. Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Hall. Ms. Gallagher, have there been any executive sessions?
Yes, the Board met an executive session earlier this evening to discuss matters of collective bargaining, potential litigation, and property acquisition.
Thank you. Now, moving on to public comment, please state your name, and if you are a resident or a non-resident, when you come up to the microphone, and thank you for respecting the five-minute rule and practicing decorum. Our goal is to always give you the most complete and correct answers to your questions from our staff and experts in each area. So for that reason, you have the option of including your email address in the registry if you would like us to reach out to you during the week with full answers to your questions. First up on the agenda is Bill Jackson.
William Jackson, I'm an Upper Gwinnett resident on Park Road. I'm going to try and lace against a number of things here, so just try and bear with me. And if I run out of time, maybe I'll come back on one of the individual comment items tonight. First off, as President of Bike North Penn, I'm here tonight to raise awareness that Upper Gwinnett resident John Stone was hit and killed by a car on Allentown Road on June 12. Presumably, he was making a left onto Green Street at the time of the accident. We, as a group, are very aware of that. We've been tracking information about that since it happened, and we've been doing a lot of discussions about it, both in person at our monthly meetings and amongst ourselves. Just want to say that, you know, we believe riding in the North Penn area is a safe activity for folks on bicycles, but we understand that situations do happen where there are crashes. I will say many times it's the fault of the bicyclist, not necessarily the fault of the driver. But with this particular incident, we don't yet have a full report as to who might have been responsible for the accident. But I will say that we're following it very closely. Some of you may also be aware that a pedestrian was killed about three months ago in Lansdale Borough. Ultimately, the driver was cited in the accident and, I believe, had three moving violations, but he was not charged criminally in that accident. And so we're very interested to see how this plays out, and we would just like to request from the township and from the police force as much transparency on details of that accident that are appropriate to release to the public. Related to that, and, you know, I do want to say that I've been a township resident now for going on 15 years, and the council and the township in general has been very open to ideas around bike infrastructure, bike lanes and whatnot, but we, as a group, really feel this is an opportunity to heighten the awareness and maybe increase the emphasis on those types of infrastructure investments, not just here in Upper Gwinnett, but around. And I'll just say that I've been, I was going through emails and stuff tonight when I was formulating these remarks, and, you know, I've been active in some of the committees and discussions around connectivity and future planning for the township, and we've had bike trails, you know, kind of on the agendas that I've been here for and part of, going back to, I think it was 2021 during COVID. And we're now like six years into that about, and we don't really have a lot of bike trails to show for it. And I know things take time, takes planning, it takes funding, but I will note that we're about to spend potentially a million dollars on a building, and I've been out of town, so I haven't been to all these meetings, but this one sort of popped up, all of a sudden, boom, we're spending a million dollars on a building. And if we have that type of budget to apply without a lot of time, and I understand with some of these property purchases, you kind of have to move quickly, I think we should also be considering our priorities. With the recent connectivity in park study, there was a lot of good stuff on that list that I support as a resident and a taxpayer. We have a lot of liabilities in that list with our existing park infrastructure, updating the castle, major improvements to the pool, and other improvements to our existing park facilities. As a resident, I'm speaking now, not from Bike North Penn, I really feel the idea of buying this property and spending that amount of money is a wrong level of priority, given all those other things that we have to upkeep and maintain, as well as potentially investing in trails, which we've already said we're going to do, but really haven't put a lot of money into yet. And so I would just say, in regards to that building, to me, as a resident, I don't see a lot of demand for additional park interior space, although that was noted in tonight's agenda that it was part of the park study. I believe the reasoning that's at least in the agenda for night is vague. We just have some general need for inside park programming. It takes away from other institutions like the YMCA, which is, in fact, right now adding to their interior program space. I believe the cost of the building, and when you factor in that it's going to have to be staffed, you know, you have to figure in those costs too, it's just not the cost of the property. And I don't know if you spoke with any of the property owners, but I know that parking lot that's used by the church is used as overflow for the tavern and for the tea operation. And of course, that's not guaranteed. I don't know what their arrangement is with the current owners, but will that negatively affect any of the businesses in the neighborhood? And then I'm also a little concerned. I'm not a conspiracy theorist, but I know that the debate around the fire station location has sort of come and gone a couple of times. And I believe, as a taxpayer and as a resident, and like having the fire station in my neighborhood, that the possibility of expanding it and adding on to its current location has not been fully vetted. So I would just hope that we're not, in some way, buying this property to have something in reserve that could be used for parks, or we could stick the fire station there. I hope that's not what is potentially there. And I'll just say, as a person who runs and bikes the neighborhood, I love the trees on that property. So no matter how it goes, keep the trees. They're big, they're beautiful trees. But I would just say, again, as a resident, taxpayer, I would encourage you to vote no on items 16 through 19 in tonight's agenda.
Bill, sorry, five minutes are up.
Okay, I'll come back later.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Next, we have Pat Pino.
Hi, Pat Pino. Been a resident in Upper Gwinnett since 99. Have some concerns that I'm hoping to get an answer. Has Upper Gwinnett Township law enforcement been instructed not to cooperate or provide information to ICE, and is the Upper Gwinnett Township declaring themselves or looking to declare themselves as a sanctuary township? I don't know if that's something you could answer. Okay, that's it.
Thank you.
I will answer. We will answer that via email per our policy. Thank you.
And that closes the public comments. Item number seven, I'll now turn the meeting over to our Township Solicitor, Lauren Gallagher, for the public hearing.
Thank you. This evening, we're going to a little public hearing to consider the adoption of ordinance 2025-02. The exhibits this evening will be The exhibits this evening will be copy T1, which is a copy of ordinance 2025-02, and T2, which is a copy of the proof of publication of the legal advertisement, which ran on July 1st, 2025. The ordinance itself is fairly straightforward. It allows the, it updates the Township Administrative Code with regard to the Township meetings, and it also sets forth the various duties of the chair and vice chair of the board. With that, like I said, it's pretty straightforward, so I'm happy to answer any questions, or we can take any public comment on it.
Thank you. Are there any public comments? Okay. I'm sorry, one second, I'm sorry.
Yes, sorry, I was just gesturing.
If you won't mind coming up to the microphone? Thank you.
How does the ordinance change the meeting structure?
It doesn't change the meeting structure. There were some outdated provisions in the code, so this is just updating the code to reflect the township's current meeting schedule and allows the township to, I mean, it talks about the organizational meeting, which is set forth in the first-class township code, and then the monthly meetings, and allows the township to set its meeting schedule year to year.
So how does it change?
It does not change. The township has been, has been meeting at this schedule for several years at this point.
Well, no, the schedule has moved around a little bit over the past several years. It gives us the ability to just advertise when the meeting will be, and that's when it will be, instead of calling that out specifically, like that we'll meet on this day or that day in the ordinance. It'll be advertised. That's pretty much our practice, anyway. It also does give some additional specificity to the roles and responsibilities of president and vice president, which is really just something that we get, I get asked as a staff member a lot, like, well, what does the president do? What does the vice president do? It just sort of clarifies those two roles. Like tonight, Catherine's not present, Rebecca's running the meeting. It's very much a housekeeping ordinance.
Right. I just wanted to say, I missed the opportunity to sign my name for public comments. If there is another opportunity later in the meeting, I'd like to take that chance, if you don't mind.
It's Judith Boss, I was going to say it wrong. And you will have an opportunity, every item has an opportunity for public comment.
Bill, I think Bill had a comment first.
So my question is kind of the same, Bill Jackson, Park Road. I read through it, I'm not a lawyer. The first part, I couldn't make heads or tails of, but then there's, the description was clear, but what I'm asking is kind of what Judy asks, is what changed? And I think what I heard was that you have the flexibility, from a scheduling standpoint, to put the meetings on any night of the month, or I guess any, but, but you don't, you don't have to hear it being like a Monday, you can put it on a Wednesday if you wanted to.
To be clear, the township board sets its meeting schedule, I believe we do it every reorganization, not every first meeting in January.
We usually do it in November, hopefully.
But they, the, the, sorry, the meeting schedule is advertised every year. And so the township adheres to that meeting schedule. Sometimes it does need to change because of availability or what, what have you, and it also allows for the scheduling of special meetings. What this does is it allows for flexibility, so if next year, there's a, you know, a board member that's no longer available Monday nights, we need to change it to Tuesday nights, whatever it may be, it allows for that flexibility.
Okay. But I didn't see anything in there that implied that you had to announce it X number of days before a meeting.
That's required by the Sunshine Act, so we have to advertise and everything.
Nothing.
Okay.
Correct. Nothing on that is changed.
Thank you.
Call.
We don't have the ability to waive the Sunshine Act if we want to.
Carl Smith, yes, resident since 1992. The ordinance this is overturning, how old is that?
I believe the last time it was touched was, I want to say 20 or 30 years ago. Yeah, it was quite.
So we're hearing the pros from your perspective. What are the cons? Every time you have a discussion in a business meeting or political meeting, I'm sure there's a discussion as to the pros and cons, correct? No? All pros?
This is just a, this is a housekeeping ordinance. There really isn't a negative to it.
Well, the cons, from the public's perspective, is what's been raised, a concern that there might be some, you know, a possibility that we're not aware of what's going on from the administration's point, you know, from the governing standpoint.
We are not, nothing that we are changing in the ordinance changes any of the protections for our citizens given by the Sunshine Act. Like, we still have to, nothing's changing with advertising. It is only just simply saying we have the ability to advertise, instead of saying, this is the date you need to meet within the ordinance.
This, this ordinance brings the, the code into conformity with what the township has already been doing for years.
Yeah, it's, as has been stated, my opinion was the same, it just felt like it came suddenly without much discussion, and, you know, now we're having a discussion, and then we're going to make a decision all one night. So that's, I think, part of the concern. I don't have anything further.
Thank you.
Fred Henkin, resident 1985. Kind of what this gentleman was saying and Carl was saying, the thing that's concerning to me, and I've mentioned this at prior meetings, was the fact that now we have decisions being made at workshop, and regular meetings are now combined. So there's not a chance to have discussion and then maybe have public comment and then maybe make adjustments. So here we are, making decisions at one meeting as opposed to bringing it up at a workshop and then voting on it afterwards. And this goes back, I've been saying this for a very long time, from my perspective, it just shows a lack of transparency on this board. I don't think there's any question about it. So previously, at workshop meetings, this would have been presented, is that correct? And then you would have voted the next meeting?
These ordinances have, all ordinances are always done by public hearing, and they're, they are typically done at the voting meeting, but they're, they're.
It was also presented last month. It was an authorization to advertise last month, opportunity for public discussion last month, voting this month, so it's exactly the same.
But I think my bigger point is maybe not so much this ordinance, it's the fact that we're combining these meetings. This came up before, and you answered the question previously, where it's advertised, I believe, in January in the reporter about the schedule of the meetings, and then meetings get combined or canceled or moved, but they're, they're now going to be publicized, because I read the classifieds every single day looking for.
The meeting schedule is always advertised at the beginning of the year, and Ms. Logan can give you the specifics on the dates, I don't know.
But some of the meetings have, have not taken place because they've been combined per the, if I'm not mistaken.
When meetings are canceled, they are, they're posted on the township website, the door is posted, and that's.
But they're not published in the newspaper, is my question.
I don't believe that they are.
They're not, is what I.
It's not required.
Okay, and I'm suggesting maybe we do that, so people like myself who do read the classifieds.
It's impractical to do when a meeting has to be canceled the day of the meeting, because there's not going to be a quorum of.
But you know a month from now that you're going to have one meeting in August or two? Is there one meeting in?
I believe there's one meeting in August.
Right. There's a perfect example, we've always had two meetings.
And that was advertised at the beginning of the year, that it was going to be one meeting in August.
That's.
I'm a journalist, okay.
But it's not advertised in the newspaper, in the legal notices. I think it should be, I think that's, to this gentleman's point and Carl's point as well. There's a lack of transparency when you make decisions and don't advertise them as a legal notice. That's just, and I'm not an attorney, so.
It is publicized, it's just not in the classified sections of the newspaper.
Understood, but it's not under, as a legal notice, is that a correct statement?
It's, the notice is given that's required under the law, absolutely.
And I'm suggesting, as a legal notice, that it's in the paper, so it's, so it's more, I don't walk by the township building every day and notice that there's something on the board saying that the meeting's been canceled. I've actually come up here and found out the meeting was canceled. If it's in.
I'd like to find out all the ways that you can find out that the meeting is canceled. So you can sign up for our alerts. I just would like, because you're bringing this up publicly, I'd like the public listening to the meeting, or maybe in the room, to hear the other ways. The first way is you can sign up on our website for notifications through, it's very simple, you put your email in, and you'll get notices anytime we cancel or post anything in the news. We also post it in the Gazette every single week, we post it on our website. You are totally right, we don't post it in the newspaper, but there are a bunch of other ways that you can find out.
And I get all those publications, and I appreciate.
So you don't have to physically walk by the township building to realize.
No, I understand, I'm just saying, I read the legal notices and I don't see them, and I think it's something we should be doing. I'm just.
But, but there are other avenues for people to find them, simply because they're not in the legal notice. I, I take issue with the fact that that is in some way a lack of transparency, or us hiding the ball on a policy issue, when there's literally ample other opportunities for people to know when meetings are, when they've been canceled, and what's on the agenda for that particular meeting. So I find it disingenuous that you're taking, conflating the issues of combining meetings and then saying this ordinance or other ordinances down the road may not have had enough ample opportunity to have discussion and thorough thought before we act upon them, because they're not in the classified section.
And, and we've had this discussion before, so the transparency, for me, comes from the fact that we're combining meetings and not having the opportunity to have a workshop and then a final vote. That's, that's really my concern. And I think that's something that should be addressed by this, by this board.
Thank you.
I'd like to answer Mr. Smith's question. He asked, I looked up the years of the, the original ordinances. The original was 1963, an update in 1985. That's a good year for you, Carl, I bet. I'm putting two and two together.
Are there any other comments on this hearing? Thank you.
So if there are no other comments, we can close the public hearing, and next would be a motion to either approve or deny ordinance 2025-02.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance 2025-02 as amended? So moved. Thank you, I have a motion, can I have a second?
A second.
I have, I have a motion and a second. Are there any board comments? Do we do have to roll call for this? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving to the departmental reports, Sandra, am I turning this over to you?
You are.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. Tonight, we're going to talk about NOVA chip challenges in Upper Gwinnett Township, a fascinating topic that I hope you'll hold on to your seats to go with through with me. So next slide, Megan. What is NOVA chip? NOVA chip is a paver place surface treatment, which is a process that we use that puts a primer on top of the roadways to extend the life of the roadways. There are many different types, well, NOVA chip is a proprietary brand, similar to something we used to use in the past called RalluMac, but it's basically a roadway coating that extends the life of the roadway. Next slide, Megan. There's three types of uses that you can use of NOVA chip, type A, type B, and type C. All three types are up on the board, if you're very interested in micro-surfacing processes. I want to point out that the type that we used for the past two years is type B, and that's just something to know as we continue in this discussion. In the past, so I'd say when I became manager here in 2019, we were using RalluMac, that's another brand of micro-surfacing. And then in 2023, we moved to using NOVA chip. But what's the difference between micro-surfacing and milling and overlay? So milling and overlay is like when we completely pave a new road. It's much less expensive than a full-depth reconstruction. It, with proper maintenance, milling and overlay lasts 15 to 20 years. The surface looks fresh, smooth, new lines, new paint. You guys are all familiar with seeing that throughout the township. In the case of micro-surfacing, and specifically NOVA chip, NOVA chip is a fast application that gives us an extension on that underlying milling and overlay of about 10 to 14 years. So the reason that we've been doing micro-surfacing is to try to extend our road paving process so that we're not paving roads every 15 years, maybe we're paving roads every 25 years and get a little additional bang for our buck. It's cost-effective, and it reduces aggregate consumption, because it recycles aggregate that's used on other roadways. But unfortunately, we've had some problems with the NOVA chip, as the Smiths well know, not to point you out, but Carl, you brought this up a few meetings ago. We already knew, because we noticed, but we really wanted to evaluate, like, is this a good process for Upper Gwinnett anymore? As staff, we don't think so. The problems we've experienced with NOVA chip are the aggregate size isn't accurate, it leaves manholes approximately one to three inches lower, creating like artificial potholes. That is different than milling and overlay, where you scrape everything off, and so the pothole, the manhole does not become a pothole, because you're making it match. Its lifespan is shorter than milling and overlay. With other types of micro-surfacing, the reason we went away from the RalluMac is it had a ton of, of aggregate that would be left in the neighborhoods that we did this, if any of you live in one of those neighborhoods. It made like a gravelly appearance that residents really didn't like, so that's why we moved away from RalluMac and went with NOVA chip. Unfortunately, the application covers manhole lids, storm grates, and makes it difficult to open them. Driveway aprons were covered, and the thin application is not suitable for all heavy machinery, vehicles, and containers. As you can see here, this is the neighborhood, so this was kind of like a new technology we were trying in 2023 and 2024. Unfortunately, what, what has happened is, in these areas where you see all the red dots, those are locations of either manholes or inlets, where not every single one has an issue where it becomes an artificial pothole, but sporadically, in some areas, there are issues, which you'll see. I want to point out, this work was done by a contractor, and we're still exploring, like, why was it applied the way it was? That's something we're going to have to deal with internally, but I wanted to report publicly to the residents for transparency's sake and to the board about these issues, because it is, it is a big issue, and it's best not to sit quietly on a big issue. In some cases, so something residents may not be so familiar with is, we're investing quite a lot of money each year, changing our manholes from like a typical manhole to a hinged manhole. The hinged manholes are much better for I and I, for the environment, they reduce our wastewater costs, because we're not treating clean water. And unfortunately, we can't put risers on that type of manhole. So if this problem occurred in another community where they used regular old manholes, you just put a riser on the manhole, now that the manhole's higher. We can't do that with a hinged manhole, it doesn't work. So we're not going to be able to take that step to make this better, very unfortunately. Rainwater is pooling and collecting on top of the manholes, which causes deterioration of the manholes and the roadway, as well as residents have made complaints of the conditions in their neighborhoods swerving and avoiding the sunken manholes. The next picture is the picture our crew took, and just went out throughout the, throughout the affected area and sort of measured manholes to see how bad is it? Is it, is it off kilter? The picture to the far right, you can see that one side is much higher than the other side, and then in some cases, it's a sink of about six inches, which is really, if you drive over that, you're really going to be like, you know, feel that. This is an example of when it rains. It's actually like a beautiful example and a terrible example. Beautiful example of our hinged manholes holding the water from coming into the sewer system, so that's good, we know the manholes are working, but unfortunately, that water's sitting there and, and starting to, over time, will degrade the man, the roadway. So this slide sort of talks about why it's so important to us to not add risers to our manholes. We're using those hinge gasketed types. Part of the project is we spray line, I think if you come to our meetings and you've seen some of the videos where we've shown what happens, how much work we're putting into that infrastructure of spray lining the manholes and making them free of water entryway. So currently in Upper Gwinnett, about 627 manholes have been replaced to be the hinged type, so it's, it's a more common type that you're seeing throughout the township now. And you can't do a manhole riser without removing all of that work and starting again, so definitely not cost-effective. Another option that we discussed, like, we've really been racking our brains, what the heck are we going to do with this? One of the options was like hands chiseling and like smoothing it out, but again, if we start chiseling near the, the manhole, the manhole structure can degrade, so then we have a problem with a degraded road and a degraded manhole, which is not better. So the next picture shows the pre-existing condition in 2014, the pre-existing condition in 2023, and then the current condition. So this one is actually not as bad as some of the others that you've seen, but you can see sort of the texture of the NOVA chip. When you're driving over it, it doesn't feel like it looks, like when it's done, it's, it's much smoother than the RalluMac application, but you can see that it definitely comes right up to the edge of the manhole. We also have issues with our stormwater inlet, some of them, you know, we, we repair them and replace them as needed as we go through the road program, but it's very important to us that grit and things like that don't get in there. When they applied our NOVA chip, they covered our inlets, and our crews had to go through and hand chip all that mess out of our inlets and make sure it didn't add to the waterways. The next slide is an example of what that looks like, and again, sort of inches, one is seven inches offset, the other is five, and you can see just from a little further away that there's a little dip as you go towards that grate. And just another picture of the scene. And just another picture of the same sort of condition. The good news for the inlet grates is they're off to the side of the road, but they're still encountered by bikers, pedestrians, everyone else. So we have met with Greg. He's our Public Works liaison. We have racked our brains, had endless meetings, and I, at this point, am recommending to the board that we abandon all micro-surfacing as an option in Upper Gwinnett because it's just not working for us. We tried the two main types that exist in the world. Neither of them have met our needs, and we don't want to move forward with anything that's going to further damage our expensive infrastructure that we have. Listen, I love nothing more than to be able to present a great solution to my residents. I can't present a great solution to you on this one. The solution is we have to mill and overlay, like, we would have to scrape it all off and redo it to the tune of $900,000, which it's my recommendation to the board that we don't do that because it's extremely expensive. We may be able to, you know, through time, see some improvements. As cars run over the NOVA chip, it degrades, but it's not going to get much better. I don't want to give you like a false promise that in 10 years, naturally, this is going to sink down and everything's going to be great. Without scraping it off and removing it, the areas that are high are going to stay high, and the areas that are low are going to stay low. But we do think we could stop any future problems by abandoning micro-surfacing right now because we don't feel it's right for our township. So this was sort of a report to the full board. Greg has heard more because he's the Public Works liaison, but it's the first time most of the board is hearing about this as well. So I just wanted to sort of put it out there for the board. Right now, we had budgeted about 400 K worth of work this year for micro-surfacing that we're choosing not to do. And just sort of listen if the board has any direction they'd like to go in other than, right now, we know we don't want to do any more micro-surfacing. I just wanted to sort of put you on notice. We're not going to be doing any more micro-surfacing unless you tell me otherwise, and see what your thoughts are.
So without micro-surfacing, the next fix at any point in the future, would the only option, other than that, is milling overlay or completely repaving?
Well, yeah, to fix this particular area, it's one neighborhood, but two years it took us to do it, it would be a complete milling overlay, like scrape it all off and redo it. There's no other solution, which I hate to say. Sorry, Catherine.
The two companies that we were using, they're both sole sources?
No, no, those technologies of RalluMac and NOVA chip, they're not sole source. There's different contractors that do both, but they're both like brands of product that you can purchase.
So even if you took it to another company, it's still the same brand that they would be using?
Yes, they would be like, any company, well, not any, but any company that knows how to could apply either of those products. It's like if you decided to buy like Walmart brand versus Target, whatever, it's a different brand and a different technology. So at this time, we're sort of, we don't need board action. I wanted to make the board aware and the public aware, and that's sort of where we stand.
If we do public comment, I don't think we technically have to on this one, but I'd be willing to hear what you have to say if you just, if you don't mind. Yeah, sure.
Maybe you've already done this, and maybe it's not an option, but is there a third-party professional consultant network you can tap into?
That sounds like a great, can you find one, Carl? Because I want one.
No, I have no idea.
Listen, on this one, Carl, I've been really, like, we've had a lot of meetings. We've talked to Nick's group, we've talked to the contractors, we've spoken with our internal staff, we've spoken with other municipalities. It's a mistake. I'm the township manager. It's a mistake that happens, and...
It's fine. I'm not trying to belabor that point. I'm trying to talk about what...
A solution for the future, yeah. Absolutely. If there is a listening consultant that knows how to fix this and wants to come and call me, please do, because I will listen to any idea other than spending 900 K to fix it.
And I would say since we're not looking to make an action or anything, it's not like decided and done.
This is not a fast one. We've been pondering that. I've known about this for, I knew about it before you brought it up as I drove through your neighborhood and saw it, and it's going to take, it's going to take us a while to figure out the solution. I have to leave my best comment of this is why in government, we don't experiment with new technologies so much because sometimes, you know, the result is not what you're hoping for, and that's definitely the case for our residents. Let the people in the back, or you know, the crowd, hear you.
Yeah. So when you do the milling, and you get all that, and then you reservize it, I know before they used to dump it back in back of the parkside place, there was that big mound.
Oh, like, we would hold it for a time, yeah.
What happens to all that now? I'm assuming...
I'll leave that for you, Dick, because I know you know the answer better than I do.
Usually depends. I mean, if the Public Works Department thinks that they could utilize it in any area, sometimes we'll just, you know, keep it ourselves. Sometimes we've given it to the Gwinnor, you know, league just to use for maybe the little parking areas and driveway entrances they have over there. And then sometimes, you know, the contractor will take it if we can't find anywhere.
It's not an environmental issue because I just know it's very, I mean, the Whizza Hickin is, many of you know, kind of starts right behind, right behind, yeah, behind me.
I think the labor's toward it.
Yeah, again, I'm not saying anyone isn't. I just worry about the environmental effects.
I do know, we just had our pre-con, and the contractor always asks us, do you want to keep the shavings? And I always say, no, thank you, please take them away.
Okay. This is a general question.
We keep enough for like filling potholes, or I don't know if that's even...
Whatever, you know, just to refill the stores that...
Right.
Redo my driveway if you want.
Thank you. Sandra, how many streets is this that...
It's the, I say Sugar Valley, I think that's the name of the neighborhood. So it's about, I mean, referring to the map, I'd say like 10.
10 from the last two years?
Yeah. I don't have every street memorized.
Is it Broad Street?
It's the neighborhood roads like McIntosh, Sterling, Lafayette, yeah, I don't have them all memorized, but that general. Oh, yeah, all the generals, General Nash.
Any other comments from the board? Thank you. Since Dave's not here today, who's doing the planning and zoning report?
I.
Perfect.
I will be giving Dave's report. The first item on the agenda, on his report, is 1327 East Prospect Avenue. This has been one that's been on there for quite some time. They did attend the Planning Commission on July 9, and the Planning Commission recommended the board to approve this, so this will likely be on your agenda for August. And then 1500 Pembroke Parkway, the Walters Group, this is the proposed land development for the 60 dwelling units. Currently, they're still working out some issues with the sanitary sewer, and related to this item on the agenda this evening is the MAP amendment, which would be the authorization to advertise for the following meeting in August to have a hearing. And then the next item is a zoning hearing board application at 615 621 West Prospect Avenue. This is an appeal of Dave's determination that the property violates the record plan, and this is for a driveway that was connected, there's two driveways that was connected where the two properties are. So they are appealing that and the condition of the zoning hearing board decision that was in 2015. So that will go on for July 22. Does anybody have any questions on those?
Thank you. For the engineering report, Nick?
Thank you, Rebecca. So I just wanted to give a couple updates on some projects. So the 2025 road program, they are going to be getting started this week. They're going to be doing the ADA ramps in the Sweetsford area. So they are, once they wrap that up, they'll be moving on to the Rexdale Development to do the curb and sidewalk next week, and then in August, they will be taking care of the paving for this year's program. For the West Prospect Avenue Drainage Improvements Phase II Project, the recommendation for award is on the agenda tonight. The project's going to extend the stormwater infrastructure that was worked on back toward the end of 2024. It's going to extend the stormwater infrastructure on West Prospect down toward the railroad bridge. This project's anticipated to begin in August, and then we're looking to wrap this one up toward the end of the fall. We'll be doing final paving. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer any.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, moving to item number 14. We've got some items on the consent agenda. It looks like letters A through I. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through I?
No.
Can she make a motion on? Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Are there any board comments?
William Jackson, Park Road. Couple of things. The police report. I noted that you have the information there month-by-month type of incidents. June, we had a cyclist killed. Under June, there is a number of auto crashes, I forget what the title is, but beneath that is fatalities, it says zero. I assume that's a clerical error unless you're only counting car-on-car accidents, but I would like that to be amended if it's appropriate to have the bicyclist fatality listed under that line item. Up here in July. Okay, great.
There's like a lag in the reporting system, chief. Okay.
Okay. Second zoning report, pages five and six, under party agreements, which I think were all like other-in-law suites? The report looks like they're all redacted. I assume that's a formatting error, but they're all kind of blacked out, bottom of page five, all of page six.
So we do redact public information that has to do with like enforcement or people's private, you know, email or phone numbers, but I don't know exactly. I see the non-redacted, I don't see the redacted. They're violations. So we, with our agenda transparency, if it's something that the right-to-know law permits us to hold back, we do hold it back. For the purposes of, there's reasons for those.
That's fine. It was first I noticed it, so that's perfectly fine.
Thank you for reading our reports.
And I forget where this one is, but there's, I believe it's in the zoning, there's some actions around 203 and 205 Church Road, and I believe one of them has like a plan that's getting close and one that's maybe not so close. And I was just asking, because I've missed some meetings, are there sidewalks as a requirement or plan with either of those addresses? As getting sidewalks in on Church Road is very important to me. So if it's not there and it comes up for discussion, I would just ask you all to, if you can get sidewalks in as part of the approval of whatever they're suggesting, please do so.
They have already gotten their approvals. I do not recall the sidewalks offhand, though.
We can get you that answer as to whether or not they were on the plan. I believe that they were, but I can't speak confidently on that.
Okay. And this is just a question I have on items H and I related to a Merck pump station project. The township is paying for that?
No. We have a reimbursed, they reimburse us for all the work. We own and operate a pump station that pumps sludge from Merck to Lansdale Borough. Merck pays for everything.
Okay.
We even charge them for our hours, so.
Okay.
It's just that we do the projects, it's our system.
Yep. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes to sidewalk in front of 203 Church Road.
Nick, with the win on the side, thank you.
Ms. Logan, would you please do the roll call?
President Carter? Vice President Moody?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner McNaney?
Aye.
Commissioner Mall?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number 15. Is there a motion to approve that, is there something that you wanted to talk about these first?
Sure, I could just say this is a disposition of various township records. There's a manual in Pennsylvania, the PA Historic Commission requires that we don't destroy records that need to be saved, and the records on this list, it's our notice to the public that we're destroying these records in accordance with those regulations. So we're not destroying anything that can't be destroyed.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, is there a motion to approve the disposition of the various township records? So moved. I have a motion. Can I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any board comments? Any public comments?
Mark Connolly, 11 Carney Drive. So the one question I had about it, I just skimmed through it. There's one line item for a copy of ordinance 521. My assumption is that's a duplicate copy and not the...
Yeah, it's a copy, so we can destroy it. We have the original.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it?
Catherine, can we hear your verbal vote on that?
Number 15.
I'll try to wait until everybody says their ayes so you can hear mine, but...
We can't really understand what you're saying. She said aye. Okay, we're good.
I said aye. I said I'll try to wait until everyone votes so you can hear me separately from everybody else.
I'll take a second after to make sure we hear you then, before I say anything. Okay. All right, number 16, Sandra?
Sure. Items 16, 17, 18, and 19 are all connected to the township's action to acquire 1908 West Point Pike. It is the church on West Point Pike, probably identifiable to most residents. It has, did come up during our CPROs planning for potential acquisition. You can see the CPROs and all of the comments from residents on our website where there is a lot of information listed about that. The church property is contiguous to our West Point Park property, and one of the items that we've agreed to, this sort of answers one of Mr. Jackson's questions, is this property would only be allowed to be utilized for park and rec use only, so it would not be allowed to be utilized as a fire department as per a request from the person we're purchasing it from. So the purchase price, we don't know exactly what the final purchase price will be because we are still in the due diligence period, but it is not to exceed the budget impact listed on the agenda, which is $1 million and change. As well as the purchase of the property, our due diligence includes a full inspection roof, phase-one environmental, HVAC, et cetera, so that we get an understanding of how we can use the property. We also have to make agreements with a title company and, what am I missing? Appraiser, which completed the appraisal as part of the requirements. So that's the gist of it in general, and we're looking for board approval on those items.
And I would recommend that these be taken as four separate motions.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, then, item number 16. I'd like to make a motion to ratify the purchase agreement for 1908 West Point Pike. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any board comments? Any public comments? Carl?
I have some comments and concerns in more of Mr. Jackson's terms of the cost of the property. And, you know, we're hearing blue sky scenario from the board here tonight, but I'll ask the same question I asked earlier on the initiative. What are the cons? We'd like to hear some of the backdrop in those discussions, because there certainly are cons just from my uneducated point of view, not being involved. You have a cost of $1 million, you're taking it out of cap. Number two, you're going to have to spend a lot of money renovating it. I can do it. It's a fact, but we're assuming that there's going to be money put into the property. There's going to be money put into the property to maintain it, and it's going to represent a liability for the township. The first time I heard the idea was from this consultant group that's forward hire. I was suspicious of that. I'm getting to the point now where I'm very suspicious when I hear these consultant groups come in that you hire because they come in with a theory, or it's presented as a theory, and then before we know it, it's reality, because then you validate it as a board. So, and this happens quickly. This just happened a year ago. So suddenly, we hear this highness guy theory from consultant group, oh, it'd be great to buy that church. We're all sitting here thinking, well, maybe unlikely. Turns out, it's not so unlikely. And here we are, a year later, and we're getting ready to, again, hear the argument And here we are, a year later, and we're getting ready to, again, hear the argument from the board at the same night, and then go ahead and move. It's a big deal.
I'd like to say something to you about that. So the church has been there forever. The gentleman that runs it, when I found out that he was having it up for sale, that he wanted to sell it, I reached out to him, I'm like, are you really selling the church? Because it was public record, I mean, I just found out. And he said, yeah, and I'm, why are you selling the church? And he said, because he doesn't want it anymore. They don't want it anymore. And I said, well, what do you mean? They don't want the maintenance, they don't want, they don't want to deal with that church anymore. And it is used by a, there is a congregation that comes there, you know, you see on Sundays, I think. But they just didn't want it anymore. And that was, that was the answer that I got. And I was shocked by that. I didn't think that you could just sell a church. And so that was, that was kind of how it started, was we just kind of found out publicly that it was, they were going to sell it. And then, I just, like I said, I know the guy and reached out to him, and that's what he told me, they just don't want it anymore. So.
The recommendation came first. This board does not decide when a private property owner puts their property up for sale. So the recommendation came up as a discussion, and actually, it was not prompted by the consultant. If you look in the CPROs plan, you can see all the resident comments that bring it up. It was brought up by the committee in discussion. Then, time passed, church goes up for sale.
So on Saturday, March, or May 17th, I reached out and I said, hey, I heard the church is for sale. He said, yep. And I said, who owns it? He said, me and the UCC. And I said, why are you selling it? He said, I'm done with it. And then, I said, how many acres? Told me it was acres. I asked what it was zoned, because this was the first I heard of all of it. He said religious. And I said, it makes sense, but it's not zoned just for religious purposes. And that was, as I said, on May 17th, Saturday, because I heard about the sale and just inquired about it. Because I know the gentleman that cuts the grass there, that does all the maintenance there. So that was, the first we heard of it was May 17th.
I just wanted to make a comment as well. So when we were elected eight years ago, and we first came on the board, the Republican leadership, who was controlling the board at the time, sat Liz and I down and talked to us about a community center that the community had been sharing that they wanted to build. There was a committee, an offshoot of park and rec, that had been working on it for over a year. They had gotten various estimates. They had met quite rigorously. And the thinking was, was that they wanted to have a big community center, maybe something like you saw in Montgomery Township. You know, their big community center that also has a gym and has a lot going on. At the time, that leadership at the time wanted our support to move that forward. However, it was cost prohibitive at that time. I don't remember what the exact amount was. It was not an official thing, it was just estimates that they received. But it was over $20 million. And at the time, it was, the committee came up with the idea that it was just cost prohibitive to build as well as to maintain. Also, because gyms were now offering like indoor, like the Y had its, the Y did their big renovation. Montgomery Township had their big, like, there was other facilities that would provide that, and that it was just too big of, of, too big of a bite for the township to take at that time. So we had to rest that, put that aside, but there was quite a bit of interest. And like I said, it wasn't from, it wasn't from the Democrats at the time, it was from the Republicans. And the community in general was excited about it. But we had to lay that to rest. And so then, as we are, as we worked on the big comprehensive plan, we talked about that again. How nice it would be to have, maybe not the community center that they first envisioned with all the bells and whistles and the indoor track to walk and all that, but maybe a smaller facility, so there could be some classroom space. So there, so the community could use it for meetings, for birthday parties, so that they could have some, some programming, some indoor classes, just to give options. So a significantly less of a colossal build, but, but something that's bigger than the small little community space that we have now that we use. And then, again, the CPROs plan came up, which was a specific part, which is probably what you're referring to, which is the specific park and rec plan. And again, it was brought up. Wouldn't it be a great idea to be able to have it? Wouldn't it be a great idea to have it here at Parkside Place? Wouldn't that be something great for the future? And so our park and rec department said, yeah, that's amazing, we would love to have that. However, we'd love to have a lot of things. We have a lot of things on our list that we want to do, so maybe someday we can do that. So that's the background. It wasn't something that was an idea from a consultant. It wasn't something that happened overnight. It wasn't just the five of us like-minded people talking. This was an idea that had been discussed and actively in the works for many, many, many years. And so when this building opened up, this was one of those things that you just can't control, that you're going to have this opportunity. I mean, the fact that it's adjacent to our satellite park is just amazing, because we can extend that park. The fact that this building, if it wasn't bought, it could possibly sit there and become a blighted property, then that is, is not being used and is just taking up space. The fact that we would be able to turn that into a community center would allow us to use a footprint that was already in existence, that we could repurpose and reuse. So we wouldn't be taking up any space. If we were in the, if we were at the point when we were ready to actually build, we wouldn't have to take any space away from Parkside Place, because that building would have it. Also, there's no rush. If we own it, there's absolutely no rush to do those renovations. We are going to try to get grants, like we do with everything, grants and awards, and there is no rush, there is no timetable. Perhaps it'll just sit there and we'll just maintain it for a little while, and we'll keep thinking about what we want to do with it. But it was one of those situations that was not planned as far as we want to take this property from, no, it wasn't at all like that. It just came up, and because, like I said, all of that history and all of that thinking, and for all those reasons, it seemed like a good choice. And so that's why we acted.
That's great. And I accept that.
Can you come up?
That's a sensible response and explanation. So, but what I'm trying to say is, there's no such thing as all upside. And, you know, in business, that's my, I come from that perspective. And I, when you're getting ready to make a decision, it's important to understand you go in with both eyes wide open. So you've laid out the good, but there's certainly a downside to what you're talking about too. There's a liability associated with it, it's financial, what I'm looking at. And, and you haven't really adequately gone through that for me, and that's what I'm looking for. So I get, I get the upside. I mean, you know, it's, it's a distressed property, the opportunity's there. And yeah, I mean, I could, I could, I could, you know, give, go with some of those arguments that you've made. But you've got to really balance that with what it's going to cost.
Oh, sure. And if some of those renovations that we would have to do, the upgrades were very, were cost prohibitive, like I said, we can wait on it. We can sit on it for a while, while we're figuring out exactly what we want to do or how we want to do it.
Well, there's, yeah, of course you can do all that, but at what cost? Again, you have holding costs. There's all these things that go into, you know, acquiring and maintaining and controlling and owning all these things. So, I mean, this is not a small thing, even though it's smaller than 20 million.
Right.
It's a million.
For sure, for sure. I just wanted to give you some background, so you understood that it wasn't just out of left field.
Just so, just so you're aware, because you would, you know, we're interested in some of the behind-the-scenes conversation and dialogue, because you're right, we don't all agree all the time. And sometimes there's, Fred, you were part of our planning process, and you saw some of that spirited discussion amongst us. We don't always agree, that's just not the case. I had a lot of trepidation with this, with this purchase at first. I think the first thing that I said is, it feels like an impulse buy. At, on first blush, I know that there's other interested parties, and we could potentially lose it if we don't act quickly. You know, I don't, I don't, generally, I'm not comfortable operating in that way in my personal life and as a steward and a fiduciary of the township. I don't feel as though that's, that's good for us either. So I wanted to make sure, you know, what are the inspections going to show? You know, are there any easements we need to worry about? And we know that there's an easement with the parking situation with pizza time that we might be able to work on. But what limitations or what covenants are going to restrict the use of this property? And the owner was very interested in selling it to us, so it wasn't, it wouldn't be developed. We wouldn't have, you know, I know that if there are certain developers that acquired that building and had designs to do with it, what they would be legally entitled to do, we'd have other questions and concerns from the public about what happens with that. So we thought, for the price point, for that amount of land, we thought, if the inspections go well, that might be a very good investment for the township. Because it's, we're not going to get any more, many more opportunities like that that would present itself, it's a very unique opportunity. The price seemed very competitively priced, and we were able to, you know, arrange an inspection. So after that kind of diligence, I had a little more comfort level, you know, coming to that. But I didn't disagree with what, with what you had said initially.
I guess, see, to continue that mindset, if you get to the point where you don't want to hold it, you could liquidate it, right? And not lose much, or maybe not make, lose any, hopefully, right?
The way that this agreement is structured, we're currently in the due diligence period, and the consultants are performing those inspections. Township does have the, if the.
I was just, the air conditioning, I was sure it was blowing. I'm having a heat stroke.
Okay.
But it's blowing now, so I said.
Yeah, I can hear.
You're saying you got.
The township has the ability to get out of the agreement. If, if the inspections come back and it does become that cost prohibitive, the board can decide that it does not want to acquire the property.
I'm saying if you do acquire it, to Greg's point, you could always hopefully sell it for at least as much as what you're paying for it, right? If you've got other people that are interested in it.
If the township acquires it, it will be deed restricted.
Oh, so not necessarily then. Good point.
Again, we're still in the due diligence period with this agreement.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carl.
Judy Voez, 619 Whittaker Place, I'm a resident. Thank you for the explanation. Being a resident for nearly 30 years, or maybe 33 years now, I do remember the discussion about having, you know, a township facility for recreation. And I do agree with you that this is really a good opportunity. And having, the township having had been fiscally responsible, you can make a motion like this quickly, which I do think is beneficial, but, and here's the but, I don't know that it aligns with your original list of goals, the high priority, mid priority, and low priority. And one of the things I saw on your high priority, as a high priority, was what I call biking infrastructure. And I don't see any money from the township being spent on any biking infrastructure. In fact, we've had a death.
We spent 80K plus last year on the bike lanes on Broad Street. This year, we've authorized 50K in engineering for a section of trail connecting to Stony Creek Park in Lansdale near Pembroke Parkway. And we also are about to embark on a million dollar grant application, which you wouldn't know this, because I haven't talked about it publicly, for the entirety, well, up to like West Point Pike of the power line trail.
So. It's good to know.
Yes, I just wanted to tell you all that to reassure you a little bit.
Let me rephrase the spending. 70K on South Broad Street.
80 plus.
80K.
87, I think, is actually.
Okay, 87, and then 50,000 on an engineering.
Engineering for the first phase of the connection to Stony Creek.
First phase, Stony Creek, okay. You also have improved signaling, this is the.
I forgot, thanks Judy. 98K on the crossing at Moyer Boulevard.
But did we pay for it, or did we get a grant?
Got a grant, yeah.
For how much?
I think the grant was 98K. The total project cost exceeded that by about 15%, because I think it was a 15% matching grant.
So I'm going to say about 15,000.
Really, the fact is, there's tons of grant funding available for trails. There is, like, to quickly be able to find out if we could get a grant to acquire this property would be impossible, given the real estate market. But what Denise said is absolutely true. We will be developing the property if we move forward with grant funding. We will not just be spending money without trying to acquire grant funding.
All right. So it really comes to my next point. It looks like we've spent, as a township, maybe 150 to 160,000 on trail improvements. And really, it's been so minor and not connected. And yet, order of magnitude different, a big order of magnitude different. One to 10 for the purchase of a property that is being decided within a two-month period. And we've been working on biking infrastructure since 2020, I think it was. So we're over five years.
Share your passion for trails. And I want to point out a couple other things. With the Pico Power Line Trail, we didn't have to pay to acquire that easement, to put that, so that, just, it's not an exact apples-to-apples comparison. We were able to work to acquire that easement for, it's about 800 bucks a year. So we, it's a different scenario, bike infrastructure.
I disagree.
Yeah.
I think.
I mean, if you just look at spending, it's.
My pocket of money leads to my priorities. My priorities dictate what I can spend. I don't see how that can be any different at the township level. The money that is going to be spent for a piece of property might be on the order of 10 times more than what you've spent in five years on improving infrastructure, which, again, is, in my opinion, a fiscally responsible thing to do, because it reduces your road system demand, and therefore, less money to be spent on roads. I just don't understand that that is not viewed as a fiscally responsible approach to improving life here. And let's just magnify it by the fact that there was a death in the township within the last six weeks.
Sandra, can you also discuss a little bit how the timeframe are so different?
Yeah.
When we make the decision that we want to spend more money, put more of a focus on bike lanes, on trails, that is very different than acquiring a building.
The one thing is the same.
That pops up.
To build a trail, we need to acquire property. To acquire this building, we need to acquire property. The difference is with trail acquisition, we're dealing with like hundreds of potential property owners versus one. And the difference is someone choosing to put their property up for sale versus dealing with residents who don't want a trail. Like, there's an opposition piece to acquiring the property for trail that's different than in this case. I also remembered two more things we spent money on Judy. Both of the feasibility studies for the Power Line Trail and Liberty Bell Trail. We have been very dedicated to an open, public process, and trails are just naturally going to be slower, because while you guys are passionate and I share your passion for trails, I live in a community that has an awesome bikes and hike system that I love. I believe it will make up our Gwinnett amazing, and I hope it's my legacy in upper Gwinnett is our trail system. But it's just not as quick and easy to do. And I think you'll find, you know, we're the only municipality, I could be wrong, Bill, or William, you tell me if I'm wrong, but we're the ones that installed bike lanes on Broad Street. We installed bike lanes or allowed the state to on Morris. We've been very open and accommodating of, and we've talked to lots of residents that are against trails and tried to bring them our way. In this case, it's, it's a real estate deal. Like, you have a chance right now, that's your only chance, and it goes away. So the board had to make a decision. It's different than planning for a bike and hike system that might be 30 years of planning and construction. Additionally, to construct a trail, we need to engineer a trail. So first, we have to acquire the easements, then we have to engineer it, then we can construct it. And I, I feel the same way. I've looked back at my five years working here, thinking, I haven't constructed a trail yet, but I sort of did, because the Moyer, at Moyer and West Point Pike, a developer constructed a trail at our request. There has been some. There has been some trail built in Upper Gwinnett. And it's, we work on those trails being constructed in every meeting with every developer. We care about sidewalks, we try. But it's not going to be as quick as a real estate transaction that comes up that if the board doesn't act, it's gone. And then the chance is lost until the property changes hands again in the future. So I think I understand what you're saying. I do agree, you put your money where your mouth is. And hopefully, you know, the board will continue to do that with trails. I don't think that this project is going to cause anyone on the board to say, never mind, we can't do trails too. We're going to be doing both. And both are a recreation feature that different residents enjoy in different ways.
Go ahead, Fred.
So I'm very involved with the real estate, but commercials, I'm considering this to be commercial. So what is the property you currently zoned at? I guess the map behind me might tell me, or behind you.
Village Residential.
I'm just curious.
Village Residential.
Okay. These are just general questions, these aren't...
Could be developed by, right, as twins or townhomes.
Thank you.
Well, I figured that was the second part.
Was the property ever listed anywhere, or?
In the MLS.
It was on the MLS. I'm assuming we didn't budget for this because it just popped up, is that correct?
Correct.
How are you doing?
Doing great.
What amount is in our current capital reserve fund?
I'm going to be loosey-gooseys.
You know, you can get back, you can get back to me.
But I don't really know, I can get back to you on that one.
Because I, the reason I mention that, and Greg, I'm looking at you on this, because when we talked initially about the Martin property, there was a concern about the amount of money that was going to be pulled out of the capital reserve to fund that project. And that was also a situation where there wasn't a lot of transparency because that literally came up at a workshop meeting and then there was a vote the next meeting. I was sitting right here and all these residents came out. So that was an issue with transparency. And I don't, I'm not trying to be antagonistic in any way. We've known each other for a long time, so. No, I will and you will too, I know. I'm assuming the appraisal is being rushed because of the, that was one of the questions.
To be an attractive buyer, the township, you know, has to...
I'm all over this.
Quickly, yes.
And Fred, I want to correct one thing. It wasn't rushed, it was...
Just, I'm sorry?
The appraisal was not rushed, it was done very professionally, it was just expedited.
No, no, there's the cost to expedite.
Paid additional to get it done.
Trust me, I see it every day. And the sale is contingent then upon the appraisal, obviously, and anything else that comes from that, correct? Do you know what the price of property was listed on the MLS at? That should be public record.
I think it was 750, but you're also, I'm not sure.
So we're paying over because of the market demand, I'm assuming.
We can only pay fair appraised and assessed value. We cannot, we can't just say we want to pay 2 million if it's not assessed.
This is where I'm asking.
775.
I'm sorry, Ms.?
775.
So it has to appraise for at least a million in order for us to go forward or otherwise? Okay. That answers my questions, thank you.
Thanks, Fred. Bill, did you have one more thing? And then I'd like to wrap this one up, please.
William Jackson, Park Road. Set the trail bias aside. You know, I've heard all your comments, good background. I appreciate the fact that you're talking this through with us. I think that's kind of the discussion that people are kind of asking for, maybe on other things too, so keep that in mind. But everything looks like an opportunity, right? This came up, it's an opportunity. But you still have liabilities of all your current park infrastructure, all the things that were talked about in the recent park study, all these ideas of enhancing or maintaining or replacing facilities that you already have. As a taxpayer, and again, I have my biases, I want you to spend money on other stuff. But just understand, it's whatever you're going to pay for this property, you're going to have to fix up the building, and then you're going to have to staff it. So the money doesn't stop with the purchase of the property. And you've got big things in your infrastructure that you already have, that you've already said we want to maintain, that you've got to find funding for. So please just keep that in mind as you're considering how you're going to go on this. And I guess, thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
Mark Connolly, 11 Carney Drive. So I guess the one question I have is, so I know North Walesboro, I believe, just opened their community center. And it's my understanding that they got a substantial amount of grants too. So are those, the types of grant opportunities that they had, are those still being offered? Because I think they got over a million dollars.
They got a RACP grant, and we also have a RACP allocate. So the way RACP works, it's an allocation of the state. We have a $10 million allocation we've never utilized. And there's a reason it's only, it's a very difficult grant funding source and we save it for the big stuff. But that would be a potential source of funds for this project, as well as any of the park rehabilitation funds that come out of DCNR and things like that.
So would that be able to fund the entirety of, or I guess is...
Don't know, because I don't know.
I guess you got to go through the process.
Yeah, yeah, we have to go through the process. Like, I don't know, can we walk into the building and use it? Due diligence will tell us that. This is definitely something you guys are going to have to like sort of watch. And as we move forward, plans will be shared and pricing will be shared, but we don't have any of that information right now.
So I guess, what is the procedure going forward? Obviously, in the event you guys approve this agreement tonight, obviously, it sounds to me like this is contingent upon inspection. If the property is in such poor condition, right, like, you guys can walk away. But what is the procedure after tonight? Like, would this come back up for another vote?
Yes. So I'll let Lauren explain the procedures.
So we've, in negotiating with the property owner, obviously, as Sandra referenced, there's going to have to, well, this was not part of the budget, so there's probably going to have to be a budget resolution that'll be to close this out. But we've negotiated with the property owner to proceed through the eminent domain process. So it'll be a friendly procedure, so there'll be additional resolutions that need to be, that need to take place at a public meeting, and then it'll be filed with the courts so that the courts sign off on the purchase price.
Okay, so it sounds to me like there's going to be multiple opportunities for the public to comment on this, not just tonight. It's not a one-and-done deal. This is going to be an ongoing conversation. Okay, great, thank you.
I think our record stands on involving the public in our planning processes. A lot of you in this room have been at a lot of those meetings and this will be no different.
Thank you. Okay, so for item number 16, I believe we've done all the comments. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
I'm waiting for Catherine.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes. Okay, so for the next 17, 18, and 19, I'll go through them. But when I reach the public comments section, I'll ask that if anybody has a comment for 17, 18, or 19, to just say it at the 17, if you don't mind. Okay, so number 17. We have, is there a motion to ratify the appraisal services agreement for 1908 West Point Pike? Motion? I have a motion, can I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Are there any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor? Aye? Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, number 18. This is related to the settlement and title service, the ratification of the settlement and title services from Trusted Land Transfer LLC. I'd like to make a motion to ratify the settlement and title services provided agreement. Is there a second? I'll second. I have a motion and a second. Are there any board comments? Okay, taking no public comments, so raise your hand if you'd like to make one, but I'm going to move on from... All right, all in favor? Aye? Aye? All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, and number 19. Is there a motion to ratify the due diligence analysis proposal from Boyle Construction in the amount of $14,900? So moved. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any board comments?
I have a question for Lauren.
Sure.
Lauren, what is due diligence? What are we paying $14,000 for?
This is for all the inspections that need to be done, including the phase one environmental. But this contractor will take a look at the plumbing, the electrical, the mechanical, the roof, and really inspect the property. So that's what that's for.
Thank you.
Any other board comments? Public comment, Fred? Okay, perfect, okay, sure.
We're doing a bit more than the average property owner would do, as you can imagine. Yeah, but we're local government and if we want to use it, we have to know. Yeah, yes, definitely.
Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. For item number 20, give me one second here. Okay, item number 20. The authorization of the advertisement of ordinance 2025-04 for the TOD2 zoning map amendment. I'm just going to read some information really quickly on this. On August 22nd, 2023, the Board of Commissioners adopted ordinance 2023-02, which amended the township code to create a new zoning district classification for the transit-oriented district overlay, or the TOD2. While this ordinance established the text to overlay the new, excuse me, the text to the new overlay district, the corresponding amendment to the zoning map, which is necessary to apply the TOD overlay to parcels 560001303 and 560001307. Approximately 5.7 acres located at 1500 Pembroke Parkway was not adopted at that time. So now, we are, an ordinance 2025-04 has been drafted to complete this process by applying the TOD to overlay parcels identified in the ordinance map exhibits. All zoning amendments have been considered by the Board of Commissioners but require authorization to advertise. So that's, all this is looking to do at this point is authorization for advertisement. So I would like to make a motion to authorize the advertisement of the ordinance 2025-04 for the TOD2 zoning map amendment. May I have a second? I'll second. I have a motion and a second. Are there any board comments? Are there any public comments related to the advertisement of the zoning map? Specifically, the advertisement?
Yes, there will be a public hearing next month.
Yes.
It's just a public hearing for the map amendment.
It'll be during the monthly meeting.
And Lauren, the developer of the Walters Group is still awaiting several pieces of approval, right? Particularly DEP approval for sanitation, is that correct? Wastewater.
The conditional use and the land development will not be heard in August.
And that, the August meeting, Fred, is the 11th, August 11th, it's a Monday, 7 o'clock? Oh, I'm sorry, Carl.
It'll be advertised in the reporter? Yes, the advertisement will go over to Ms. Logan this week and it'll run twice in the reporter. And it'll also be posted on the township's website on the agenda and all the normal means.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor? Aye? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving to the public safety section, Commissioner Hall, do you have anything you'd like to discuss in this section?
I just wanted to announce two things. I know we're running long, so I will try to be quick about it. There is an event, a very popular event happening on July 20th, Sunday. It is entitled Ben to the Shore Bike Tour. This is hosted by families behind the Badge Children's Foundation. So that is a charity bike ride that raises money to provide necessary financial relief to the families of fallen or critically injured first responders. It's to cultivate positive interactions and relationships between first responders and the communities they serve, and to provide mental and emotional well-being resources to first responders and their families. This was a very important race to Jeff Tomzak. Jeff Tomzak was our former fire marshal and a career firefighter who died last year due to an illness likely related to his life dedication to first response. His wife and his eldest son are riding and they're raising money for this important charity. And I know so many other first responders who are also participating in this, including several of our own police officers, some of our firefighters. The VMSC has a whole team of members. It's just a really great event and it's a really great charity to donate if you are able. If you go to any of their social media pages or you go onto their websites, you will find lots of information about this. So I just wanted to put a plug in for that. And then the other thing I wanted to share is that both our Upper Gwinnett Police Department and our Upper Gwinnett Fire Department are teaming up with the North Penn School District to collect items for Build a Bag. This is something the school district does every year. They ask people to purchase school supplies. There's a whole list of the specific school supplies they need. Again, you can find it on their, the fire department, the police department, or North Penn School District websites, or all the social media pages. And so then they collect all the school supplies and then they give them to the kids who have need for them. And they are specifically, our organizations are specifically collecting them at the fire station. There is a bin right outside the banquet hall. These donations need to be donated by August 8th. Just wanted to do a plug for that too, because it's important. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to the Public Works and Parks and Recreation section, Commissioner Mull.
Thank you. Agenda item number 21. You can see I'm making a motion to approve change order number one for the Haynes Run Stream Bank Restoration Project, which reduces the cost of the project by $17,800.
Thank you, I have a motion, is there a second? So moved. I have a motion and a second. Are there any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Agenda item 22. I'm making a motion to approve the base bid award for Phase 2 of the West Prospect Avenue Drainage Improvement Project to KBC Construction LLC in the amount of $372,640.
Thank you, I have a motion, is there a second? I'll second. I have a motion and a second. Are there any board comments? I have a comment. Sandra, can you just explain this one a little bit?
Pitch that right over to Nick.
Nick, can you explain this one a little bit?
Yeah, this is what I was talking about in my report. So we had done Phase 1 of the West Prospect Project toward the end of 2024, which extended storm infrastructure down West Prospect from the church that's right there down to, I believe, Pennsylvania Avenue it went to there. This is just going to extend it from Pennsylvania Avenue down toward the Railroad Crossing Bridge.
Thank you. Any other board comments? Public comments? All in favor? Aye? Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. For the wastewater treatment section. Item number 23. As approved in the 2025 budget, the purchase of the manhole riser rings and manhole adhesive plays a critical role in our manhole casting replacement program. This project is a joint effort between Public Works and the wastewater treatment plant to reduce the inflow and infiltration collection system. With that in mind, I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of manhole riser rings and adhesive from LB Water in the amount of $16,582.81. I have a motion, is there a second? I have a motion and a second. Are there any board comments?
Oh, and you made the motion?
Yeah. No problem. Any public comments? Ms. Logan, will you please do the roll call?
President Carter?
Aye.
Vice President Moody?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner McNaney?
Aye.
Commissioner Mull?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number 24. Based on the engineering study, it was determined that the Merck pump station required a full upgrade and the project for this upgrade began in March of this year. The change order for BSI are associated with cost increases to various modifications for this project and all costs associated with this project will be reimbursed by Merck. I'd like to make a motion to approve change orders 1 and 2 for BSI in the amount of $1,910 and $14,855. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor? Aye? Aye? Aye, aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number 25. This change order also involves the Merck Pump Station Project for work provided by Blooming Glen Contractors and all costs associated with this project again will be reimbursed by Merck. I'd like to make a motion to approve change order number one from Blooming Glen Contractors in the amount of $65,857.3. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
So moved.
Motion and a second. Are there any board comments? Any public comments? All in favor? Aye, aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And number 26. This contract increase is due to delays in getting out the notice to proceed for this project. The cost associated with material, the cost is associated with material and contractor increases. I'd like to make a motion to ratify the cost increase to the influence channel bypass gates project in the amount of $4,320. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any board comments?
How long is this bid open for?
Can you tell me more about that question? Sorry, I just want to understand.
Well, the price increases of 4220, is that for all services rendered? Or is that for work that is, you know, already estimated?
It's actually work that's already been completed because you're ratifying it. Yeah, there shouldn't be any additional changes at this point.
And it's a combination, I think, of two.
Two different vendors and contracts, yeah.
So that is the.
Yeah.
Any other board comments? Public comments? Ms. Logan, will you please do the roll call?
President Carter?
Aye.
Vice President Moody?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner McNaney?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And then on to other business, I think we just have two more items remaining. The, is there a motion to approve the July open invoices?
Motion.
I have a motion. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Second.
The motion and a second. Are there any board comments? Any public comments? Ms. Logan, will you please do the roll call?
President Carter?
Aye.
Vice President Moody?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner McNaney?
Aye.
Commissioner Mull?
Aye.
Motion passes. And then finally, there, I'd like to make a motion to approve the July paid invoices. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
So moved.
Motion and a second. Are there any board comments? Any public comments? Ms. Logan, will you please do the roll call?
President Carter?
Aye.
Vice President Moody?
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner McNaney?
Aye.
Commissioner Mull?